Julia? Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, June 12, 2025. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting. It's 6:00 PM. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan. Here. Councilmember Orbach. Here. Mayor Clark.
Here. Everyone, please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Additions and deletions to the agenda.
Staff has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Item three, additional materials.
Staff received additional materials for tonight's agenda. Item 4A, 32 emails were received after publication of the agenda packet, as well as one staff memorandum, which was distributed to the council today. For item 8F, there was one staff memorandum correcting the attached resolution, the attached packet. Item 8J, two emails received after publication of the agenda packet. And for item 9B, one email was received after the agenda packet. All materials are available for public review online and in the back of the room in our hard copy packet, and were provided to the council before tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Item four, City Council vacancy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We are here tonight to discuss the appointment of a City Council member for a term that expires in December of 2026. As background for tonight's item, on May 8, Vice Mayor Peterson resigned from the City Council. He left the dais and resigned his position immediately. On May 22, the council discussed the appointment process and directed staff to use a similar process as January 2025, and we filled the vacancy left by then-Mayor Brooks. The council motion from May 22 included a request that staff investigate the ability to request proof of residency from applicants. After a review of state law and applicable case law, staff offered an option on the application to include proof of residency. The application period ran from May 27 to June 3. As a refresher, the California Government Code establishes that when a council vacancy occurs, the council must either appoint somebody or call for a special election. The deadline, as outlined by the Government Code, to do either one of these options is July 7. The California Government Code qualifications for running for council would be that the applicant be 18 years of age, a registered voter in the city of Capitola, and a resident. Following council's decision on May 22, staff conducted public outreach for the item by advertising the application through a press release on social media, on our website, and we distributed hard copy flyers in both English and Spanish throughout the village and nearby businesses. Through the brief time that we were able to advertise this vacancy, we received 15 applications, which is a really high number for the short time periods. We're really impressed and thankful for our residents who showed an interest in this. By the deadline of June 3, 13 of the 15 applications were qualified. One application qualified after the deadline. And then today, we did receive a request to withdraw an additional application. So that leaves us with 13 total applicants for consideration tonight. Tonight, staff recommends that the council use the same process as the January vacancy to review applicants. So in the January vacancy, the council decided to use a modified version of rank choice voting, sometimes known as order of merit voting. It assigns points for each rank of preference. So your first choice candidate would receive three points, your second choice would receive two, and the third choice would receive one. If there's a clear consensus at the outset, then a council member can make a motion and a vote to appoint the applicant to the position. Tonight's recommended action is to pass a motion to appoint a successor to the vacant City Council seat. This decision does require a three vote and the affirmative to get the person on the council. And following the motion and the vote, I will issue an oath of office to the appointed council member. They can take their seat and join us for the rest of the meeting. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I'll open that to council questions.
I have a couple of questions. Is it okay if I ask one of the candidates some questions?
I'll leave that decision to the mayor. We didn't outline any process for applicants to join us as a part of the meeting order tonight, so they can speak during public comment.
I have an idea that if it were to come to a draw, then I think it would be appropriate. You could ask questions at that time. If we did that beforehand, would we... maybe unfair for some of the candidates that are not prepared to answer questions?
Okay, bye.
Great, that'll bring us to public comment. Anybody who'd like to address council? You have up to three minutes. And if you could state your name for the record. Welcome.
All right, thank you, Margot. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tori Del Favre. I'm a Capitola resident. You know, fun fact, City of Capitola was incorporated in 1949. Susan Westman joined the City of Capitola in 1981. She has been here in so many different capacities, as a citizen, as a volunteer, as an employee, as someone on the Planning Commission, as someone on the Board of Directors for nonprofits. She's worn a lot of hats and sat in a lot of different seats. Simply put, she's a Capitola superhero. And I say that with so much love and so much pride because, as many of you know, she's my mother. Beyond that, as a resident of Capitola, just need to share that she's a known quantity. So in this process tonight, where Margot got appointed the last round, she was a known quantity. The community knows what they're getting. The council knows what they're getting. So it really seems like a simple solution to appoint someone with this level of depth and is a known quantity in this city. Otherwise, we should look at a special election because many of the other candidates are not known quantities to the community. We don't know about them. But we do know about Susan Westman because, again, she's been showing up in so many different capacities in this town since 1981. Thank you for your consideration. Mom, love ya.
Thank you. Welcome.
That's a hard act to follow. Good evening. I ought to wanted to... you know, I'm not going to rehash my letter, but I think Susan Westman is the obvious choice for many people in the community. She has held many different positions within the city. She's well-known throughout the community, throughout the county. She's well-versed with multiple agencies outside of just our little radius. I think that it would be... I think it would be a detriment to the city to not have her back in that seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, all. Susan Westman is my grandmother. Tori is my mom. We're three for three on her. And so it comes to a point where you realize that she's been a part of this community forever, and she's seen so many changes. She's seen so many politics. She's worked above us. And not only me being biased towards her, it's just I look at her resume and I think like, this lady would be the most fit, the most responsible, the most caring, the most thoughtful person that would be in that seat. And I'm not saying that because I'm her grandson. I'm saying that because I'm a community member here too. All you guys are too. And she is the right fit. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Welcome.
Well, I'm not a relative, so we'll start with that. But I do know one thing. We need somebody who is able to get up and run with this. We don't need someone who needs to be brought up to task and know what's happening in the city. Susan already knows all this by being on the Planning Commission and doing all the volunteer work. And, I mean, I've known Susan since way back Begonia days. And to this day, we still talk about barges and lights and stuff. So, community-related, we need someone who's been here longer than six months. And we need someone who knows what the community is involved in and what's happening. So I recommend Susan Westman. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and members of the City Council. My name is Pam Greninger. And I'm not new around here. I've been here for about 46 years, and I worked for the city for 32. And of the majority of the time that I was working for the city, Susan Westman was an employee. And we worked very closely together on a lot of projects. And Susan has always just been so involved in the community and takes the community's best interest at heart. And as Mary Beth mentioned, I think we need someone that has some history and knows what's been going on in the community for a number of years. And she can just get right in and make a difference in the work that you're doing for our community. So I would wholeheartedly recommend that you consider her application for this opening. Thank you, and say thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I also am a long-term resident over 45 years. And I second all the wonderful comments that we just heard about Susan Westman. And I won't go into detail, in detail like I could, but I will say this. Trust is built, trust is earned, and trust is tended. This is why I support Susan Westman. As a 43-year resident of Capitola, Susan Westman has built trust in our community. Susan Westman, as a public servant in pivotal positions over many, many years, trust has been consistently earned and well-placed. Read her application. Just read it. Read all the applications and read hers again. Susan Westman will continue to tend and grow trust in our Capitola community. Susan Westman's integrity is impeccable. I trust Susan Westman, and I believe she is the perfect addition at this critical time to the Capitola City Council. I urge the Capitola City Council, Councilmember Margot Morgan, Mayor Joe Clark, Councilmember Melinda Orbach, Councilmember Jerry Jensen, to unanimously appoint Susan Westman to the Capitola City Council. In the event this council votes, they result in a tie. As an equitable solution, I would request a special election and let the people of Capitola decide, even if it is costly. Thank you so much for this meeting tonight, and I hope that it goes well.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Narendra Dev and an applicant for the City Council position here. Me and my partner, we moved to Capitola around October of last year. So in that sense, I'm a relatively new resident. But I've worked extensively with the city in my previous stays at Oakland and at Berkeley. Let me give you a few examples. In Berkeley, I was an alternate commissioner on the redistricting survey. This is a survey which is done after the 2020 census to balance the eight districts in Berkeley. Berkeley has around 120,000 population, eight districts. So it's about 15,000 per district. So after the census, they see how many are in each district. And if there are some which have more and some which have less, we need to move some houses from one district to another. Obviously, whenever there's a change, it's ruffled some feathers. So part of the participation was to go and meet with the residents, explain why they would be moved from one district to another, meet with the councilors, see they were comfortable. And once we explained it, people were generally comfortable with that. Another example is parking on our street. In my street in Berkeley, it had open parking. So people would park campers, and there were people from the neighboring Alta Bates Hospital, who would staff and patients. They would park there because it's cheaper than parking in the structure. We could not get parking on the street as a result. So I organized the 20 residents on my section of the street, which was open parking. We initiated a signature campaign to change the street from open parking to permit parking. Permit parking costed $66 a year. Residents... it's only applicable to residents on the street to get the permit. And with the permit, they could park unlimited, and outsiders could park to us free. It's not like we locked them out. So it was a good solution. Out of the 20 residents, 17 supported it, three did not. One person felt compassion for the homeless and did not agree. Two people felt it was an abomination to pay for parking. So each person, their own. We presented both sides to the city. It was heard in the City Council. A petition was moved. It was passed unanimously. And my street, where I lived in Berkeley, is now permit parking. We are now... I'm now here in Capitola. Me and my partner, we love the city. We love the Capitola Village, 41st Street, Riverside, Cliff Drive. And I would love to make it, take it to the next level in this role. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Well, hello there. So my name is Kami, and some of you may know me. And I have a bigger fight to fight later on. But I wanted to put my vote in for Susan Westman. I know that I put my application in for City Council, and you may now officially withdraw that. And I am not a relative, but I still like Susan Westman for council. I think it'd be great. She's been here a long time. My family's been here over 100 years in Santa Cruz County. And so I think it's really important that we have people who are embedded into the community and who can offer us something. And I think Susan Westman is that person. So thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Peter Wilk. I'm sorry you have to go through this again. I want to say a couple of things about Alex Peterson because I know he had to leave due to a technicality. But he also mentioned some vitriol. And I just want to wish him the best of luck in his new endeavors. And it's a shame that anybody has to leave Capitola with a bitter taste in their mouth. So good luck, Alex. I applied, not knowing... for all you know, when you apply, you might be the only person who's applying. So you figure, what the heck? I've got a decent resume. I think I can hit the ground running. I think I've shown that in the various activities I've been in, I've made a difference. And let's see. Actually made a note or two, did I? It's really nothing to speak of. Oh, well, I... simply that I think I have got the time to spend. I'm retired. I can spend the time that you need to support whatever activities you're doing, backfilling committees, you name it. I enjoy community service. It's a lot of fun. And I appreciate your support. I am impressed with the number of applicants that are here. That's great, you have a choice. So choose wisely, and if not, choose me.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council members. You sort of sit in the back waiting to see if you have something to add. And so many people said so many wonderful things. One of the things that struck out to me, just riveted me, is unknown people. Are you going to choose someone who you have no idea of anything that they're going to do and how they're going to influence the city? And so you sort of wonder, do they know much about the city to even help us? I've worked with Susan Westman for many years. And I've run for election three times, as you know. And finally got to this point. But every time I talked to Susan, I learned something new. So when I was thinking about running, she was one of the people, and her husband Nels, that I went to and asked for advice. And I learned a lot. I've been involved in politics in my city of San Francisco and didn't hear it over 20 years, excuse me, since I was 20. So if you could learn new things from talking with someone who's had that breadth of experience, you have someone wonderful to add to the City Council. So it's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. For those who don't know me or who aren't related to me, I'm Susan Westman. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the council for going through this process to select someone to be the next council member. Also, I wanted to thank the people who have supported me, particularly my family who got up and spoke for me. That was quite touching to me. If selected, I would look forward to working with all the members of the City Council in moving Capitola forward. I think that my resume and my experience and my involvement in the community and being a current Planning Commissioner would allow me to hit the ground running and help Capitola move forward. I think it's important that we all work together. We hear from all our citizens, that we're capable of making compromises, that we work with our staff and other agencies outside of Capitola who are involved in the city to make things happen and continue to have our community be one of the best in Santa Cruz County and personally, I think, in California. We're all lucky to be here, and we want to make certain that it's a community that continues to be welcoming for all kinds of people. Young families who move in, people who want to retire, people who are renters, people who can afford to buy. And we need to work together to make certain that we continue to be that kind of community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. There are three of us in this council chambers tonight that actually worked with Susan when she was an employee of the city, myself, Pam, and Karen Hannah. And I think we all agree with what Pam had to say about Susan. I was part of the council that first hired Susan as Community Development Director and then appointed her later as City Manager. And I can attest, she had great experience at that time. And since that time, she has gained more experience, more knowledge of this community, become an integral part of it. And she will add so much to this council and so much experience and bring so much to this city that she's the one you should appoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, hello. Good evening. My name is James... Oh, I didn't do that. Excuse me. So I'm not sure... My name is James Ewing Whitman. I'm not sure if I'm going to stay to the end in the general government public hearing on B, Castle Mobile Home Park. I'm looking around at the two men. I gave some information to... I'm looking around at the two men I gave some information to and they're not here. So I'm not really sure, I don't mean to yell, I'm not really sure what caused the council member to resign from this council. And I'm not sure if he's resigned from Ambag. Do you guys know what Ambag is? I guess my question is, I hope that whatever confidentiality agreements that you city councils members take and the board of supervisors take, because since before 1915, any incorporated city or county is under the control of a city manager. So these individuals that voted for you folks are under the control of the city manager who was not voted by the citizens and is internationally controlled Rockefeller individual. I've been a little bit more forthright in county of Santa Cruz with what I, I don't mean to be yelling. So I mean, I'm a, geez, I'm here because I actually, I don't mean to yell, I washed my hands, I was at work. Glad you guys have paper towels because I needed to clean the sink because I didn't want to waste water and my hands were pretty dirty. So I'm here because I actually care. I mean, Tuesday, I went to the supervisors' meeting, spoke first, I like to speak first, went to the city council, spoke second because the gentleman asked if he could speak first. Went back to the supervisors' meeting to, I thought the meeting started at 1:30 and the meeting was still going. And I politely, when it was appropriate, walked to the mic and asked for a point of order. And I think that, I don't remember exactly what Jason Heath said, but he said something along the lines that the public can't ask for points of order, which I thought was quite fascinating. If there is something going on with the system and you have a question, you can't be, you can't use it to say I disagree. But in the city council, we can normally comment on the consent agenda and Fred Keely was busy. He forgot to include the public. And even though I was sitting against the wall and could have clacked my heels like a drum, I made the error of going, which got his attention, not the best attention. And we clarified that. And then afterwards, he spoke to the, into the record about how you can ask for a point of order. And I literally left that meeting and went to the meeting where Jason Heath said, the public can't call a point of order. That's enough for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see all of you.
Welcome.
Hi, Scott Rolfe. So I'm not here tonight to tell you who to appoint. That is your job, most assuredly. But I have been thinking about why there are five members on a city council. I figure it's probably written down somewhere. But I think the purpose, at least the attempt, is to have governance decisions debated and deliberated with multiple points of view. Those multiple points of view representing the diversity of experience and perspectives of the people of the city of Capitola. So the people in this room telling you what they want, week after week, including myself, we are the privileged of Capitola. We are the ones who have arranged childcare. We are the ones who are working second jobs. We are the ones whose shift doesn't start in the evening and run till 11 o'clock at night. I have a sneaking suspicion that those of us here tonight are interested in local government. We probably voted in the last election. We've had our voices heard, we have our voices heard now, we had our voices heard then. Those who aren't here, the busy parents, the gig workers, the line cooks, they all voted too. And they don't have their voices heard here tonight. So I ask of you, as you determine who you will appoint tonight, to think about the people who voted but couldn't be here. Think about how your appointment will support the voices, the demographics and the votes who are not in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, city council. My name is Trevor Wickham. I'm running for city council position. I'm new to the area, very new, like a couple of months. And I really wanted to get involved with the community and learn as much about it as possible and just integrate as quickly as possible. This opportunity came up, so I ran with it. I'm here by way of Los Angeles. And coming up here has just been amazing. I'm a surfer, I'm a mountain biker, this, just like this place blows my mind every day. With that being said, I do think you cannot discount new blood coming in to make decisions in any political situation. And that is why I put my name in, because I think I bring a fresh perspective to what could be going on in the city and around Capitola. Now, I think a good leader listens to the constituents. And after coming here this evening, I'm also going to redact myself from the position of city council and put my vote in for Susan Westman because it seems like she is an amazing person. And I'll be around, you're going to see me, I'm going to be doing stuff. So I'm going to be in the shadows. But for this one, Susan Westman, thank you.
Thank you. See, no further public comment? I will bring it back to council for deliberation. And I'll just start out by saying, it's very awesome to see so many people in the community come forward, really great resumes and people that really care about Capitola. Not an easy thing to do, but I said, everybody was able to come here and at least speak about who they might like to see and now it's up to us. Madam Clerk, are you going to start us off or should I start with choices?
It's up to you, Mayor. If you'd like, I can pull up like an Excel spreadsheet with point values so that as you guys make your decision, that's up on the screen. Or you can just go through the first round. And like I said, if there's a clear consensus after the first round, then we can make a motion and go from there.
Yes, the city manager has shown us that the spreadsheets work well, so we'll go to that.
Oh, he gave a way wing spreadsheet?
Can I make some comments first?
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, thank you for everyone for being here tonight. Sorry, I'm feeling a little nervous. So on Tuesday night, Governor Newsom gave an address to the people of California in which he stated, democracy is under assault. Just today, California's US Senator Alex Padilla was forcefully removed from a press conference, shoved to the ground and handcuffed by FBI agents trying to ask questions at a news conference in Los Angeles. Our democracy is under assault at the federal level, at the state level, and even here at the local level. I hear from people every day who feel discouraged, outraged and powerless. Tonight, for the second time in the last six months, because this council is unwilling to spend the money on a special election, we have four people, only three of whom were duly elected by voters substituting their own opinions for those of 9,000 plus residents in our community. No matter who we select, no matter who we selected, who is selected, the resulting council will be drastically different from the one the voters chose nine months ago. That is not representative democracy. We are choosing to deny our constituents the power to select their leaders at a time when they are desperate to feel empowered. In the next 18 months between now and the 2026 election, there are hugely important issues coming down the pipeline related to our most important regional transportation project. The city's RTC appointment is at stake and tens of millions of dollars in grant funding are at risk. It would be easy to just support the person with the most experience to fill the position, but I cannot do that if it involves turning a blind eye to the person's position on the most controversial issue in our county. As we recently saw, the rail trail debate is far from over in our community and it is far from one-sided. Forty-eight percent of our voters voted against Measure L in 2018. Sixty percent of our voters voted against Greenway's Measure D in 2022. Since Councilmember Peterson generally, was generally supportive of the RTC's approach to the rail trail planning efforts, I don't think it's appropriate to select anyone who has endorsed, donated to and/or worked as an advocate for Greenway to fill his position, no matter how much experience they bring to the table. Doing so would create an unelected majority on this body that I do not believe accurately represents the desires of the majority of our residents. I'm committed to working in good faith moving forward with whoever the majority chooses, but tonight I have to say my vote, I have to use my vote to stand up for the residents of our community who are being disenfranchised by this decision and those and whose votes in the last several elections are being disregarded.
Anything to add?
Sure. Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody that applied. Thirteen plus applicants is pretty impressive. And reading through them, your resumes are stellar and Capitola is lucky to have that many people interested, wanting to step up and help and get us to a good point. Reading all the applications, everybody had really good values, really good views for our future. Many of them were all aligned with one another. So I think that that's something to be said. I think we all want to move forward together in a good direction. Let's see, I think I would say that there were many, there's a handful of people that I would like to see up here, working with. But because we just went through this and because we do have lots of work to get done, even though it is a short term, and we have also asked candidates, or I'm not going to say candidates, applicants, whether or not they'd be running again in 2026. I think that is a good, also a good point to start off. That's something that I vowed to not do when I was reappointed. And I think showing, the council showing the city that there are people out there that will be willing to run, hopefully, like actually get out there and do it and talk to people and get your name out there, name and face, and be a part of the community. I think that is really, really telling and awesome. This is why I got involved with city council. I wanted to be a part of this community and give back. So with that, just based on voices that we have heard tonight, I, I'm going to do my first ranked choice for Susan Westman. Thank you.
Didn't know we were ready for the choices at this time, but I'll let, let's remember Jensen.
Yeah, thank you. I too would like to thank all the applicants that are interested in helping me fill this position. One thing, what I think as our community is moving forward is about transparency, having accountability and also having consistency. And three months ago, approximately, it was a 5-0 vote, a 4-0 vote at that time, to go to have an appointment process and have candidates come in and turn their application. Now, three months later, we had the same vote again, 4-0, to have the same process again, to have candidates come in and fill out their application. And so I think consistency, and I can't see how dynamics in the community has changed the last three months to get to that point. And so again, thank you for all the applicants that turned the application, but I'm proud to see that we have the same exact process that is continuing for this time. And hopefully, in the future, other councils aren't challenged about having, you know, let's say the challenge to stand up here and have to select. I'm a firm believer, I was elected to represent 20% of the community with five city council members. It's a difficult position to put ourselves in, especially myself, and I have to now select the person to represent you, the 20% next. But that is a position that we have voted on and that's a position that we've taken. And so that's why we're here tonight. So those are my comments. And with that comment, I will be also supporting Susan Westman for the appointment of the city council.
I'd like to give Madam Clerk the opportunity to use her spreadsheet.
I'm no Excel wizard, people. But thankfully, our finance director helped me make the formulas here. So I did already note Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Morgan's choices there for Ms. Westman at the bottom. So Mayor Clark and Mayor, Councilmember Orbach, if you guys would like to provide me with your first choice picks.
My first choice is Peter Wilk.
I would like to pick Susan Westman. With that being done, it looks like it's time to swear somebody in, Susan Westman.
So again, as a reminder, just a moment, please. As she's coming up. We do require a motion and a vote of at least three council members to appoint the officer.
Motion and a vote. Can I get a roll call, please?
Let me ask a few questions first. I'm asking the mayor, thank you. I just want to ask Ms. Westman a couple of questions.
No, not at this time.
Okay.
I need a first and a second, please.
I'll move to appoint Susan Westman to Capitola City Council.
I'll definitely second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye. Not jumping to conclusions. Why don't you come on up, Susan?
Testing. Okay.
Hi, Susan Westman. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this application freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of which I'm about to undertake. Thank you very much.
Still some unfinished business with four. We have four B, city council reorganization, nomination and appoint a new vice mayor.
Once again, good evening, Mayor and Council. Our city code requires that we conduct a city council reorganization at the end of every calendar year. So with the resignation of Vice Mayor Peterson, that leaves a vacancy in the vice mayor position. So at this time, staff recommends taking public comment and then making a motion to appoint a vice mayor for the remainder of this calendar year.
Great, I'll open it up to public comment.
Oh, my name's Keith Haylon. I'm a resident of Capitola for 35 years. First of all, congratulations, Susan, and thank you that we have a full board now. I think in terms of the board, it's nice to have a kind of a cross-reference of experience now. But one of the things that I've noticed over the last few months is that one of the members has taken, had been able to have the time, unfortunately. has taken, been able to have the time, unfortunately, and take the time to get out, engage the community, talk to multiple people outside of Capitola, look at, look at interests that are going on, try and get information, try and understand Capitola's position and what we're doing. And so far, I think, I think you should make the Vice Mayor Jerry Jensen. That's my recommendation.
Further public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council deliberation.
Um, yeah, I can start off. The person I would like to nominate would be Councilmember Morgan, as you're already sitting in that seat. You've, I think you'd be a great Vice Mayor to fill, fulfill out the rest of the sharing. I would hope that you would lead us down that road.
I second that.
I would like to also add that she's been in the position before and did an excellent job, so I think it'll be an excellent choice. Our new Councilmember Westman.
And I concur with what the rest of the council said. I think Councilmember, Councilmember Morgan did an excellent job representing us in the past, and she'll do an excellent job again.
Great. Having the first and a second, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Westman?
Aye.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye. Motion pauses. Bring us to our next item, presentations. Welcome.
Hello. Hello, everybody. Can I just start? Okay. My name's Malina Ranga. It's nice to see some familiar faces. I'm a Community Impact Coordinator for the United Way of Santa Cruz County, and I'm here to support one of our wonderful youth liaisons. As some of you know, for the past year, we've partnered with Santa Cruz City and Capitola City to support a youth liaison project, where we've had two representatives from Capitola serve their city under the mentorship of city council members. So we had Isla Bonney and Addison Lorber. Unfortunately, Addie couldn't make it today, but she really wanted to. But Isla will be giving a presentation on some of the work that she's done and what that experience has been like, so I will pass it off to her.
Welcome, Isla.
Hello, City Councilmembers and everybody here today. This is my State of the Youth Report. My name is Isla Bonney, and I've recently been elected as the Youth Liaison Representative for the City of Capitola. I was born and raised in Capitola, and I've lived here my whole life, born and raised in Capitola. Next slide. The reason I got involved is I was born and raised in Capitola, so I'm always looking for new ways to get involved with the city that I grew up in and help better in any way possible. So I just wanted an opportunity to help the community that I live in. The Youth Liaison Program, one of the components of the Children and Youth Bill of Rights is to engage with youth in city decision-making via a youth liaison or multiple youth liaisons. Capitola adopted these in 2024 unanimously. The objective was basically just to connect youth voices to local government representatives, and local government representatives can receive feedback and input on various city issues. It was basically just to encourage youth to participate in city initiatives and get more involved with local city government. This is just kind of like a timeline of stuff that I've done in my role of youth liaison. October was the program commencement, and then November, I met with Capitola City Representatives, and we did a meet and greet. And then December, I participated in an informational interview with Capitola City Attorney. I also attended a City of Capitola Council meeting, which was my first city council meeting I ever attended. After that, in January, I worked with Youth Action Network in preparation for our Leaders Unite workshop. And then in March, I organized, or helped to organize and participated in the Leaders Unite workshop, which was great. It was really fun. It was basically just a way for youth to get to know various city officials and like get more involved with local government. Then after that, in April, we reflected on the event and attended more Youth Action Network check-ins, as well as made and presented the State of the Youth Report. I've presented this one time before. And then May, nearing the end of the program and attending more events before its overall completion. Takeaways from this experience, I've learned a lot about local politics and that there is space for my voice if the leaders make it a priority or take the time to pay attention to what we have to say. I've learned more about the specific roles of people in office and how to work with them and what they do. I've also learned how to organize events and what goes into event planning. And I've learned a lot about leadership and the work that goes into leadership positions. The importance of youth voice and decision-making. So often decisions are made for young people without actually involving them or getting them involved in the decision-making process. There are a lot of opportunities for young people, but we're not always made aware of them. And it was kind of my belief that there wasn't enough outreach. Like, I didn't know that you could just show up to city council meetings before I was in this position and that it was open to the public. So that was new and exciting, and I actually really enjoy coming to these and being able to be involved in this sort of thing. So there are definitely certain barriers to including youth voice, but everyone should keep trying, because a lot of youth don't know that staff electeds and leaders are actually very accessible, and there are things that you can do to reach out and get your voice heard. United Way or the City Council can help by making it more known to youth, that they have input opportunities, and providing more positions or creating new roles for youth within the city, such as the youth liaison position. This program is very important because it shows and teaches youth a lot about local politics and how they can get involved. It also provides valuable insight into what goes into running the city that the youth live in or potentially grew up in. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Just really quick, before we open it up to any like questions or anything, I just wanted to mention that the City of Capitola has approved to continue running this program. And we've been working really closely with our staff and also with Isla to help us plan sort of what that's going to look like in the next year. And we just really appreciate all of your support in trying to make this program as successful as possible, like you have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Isla. It's been a pleasure having you as our first. It's been a great experience, and hopefully we'll get another council member on there. Anybody have anything else?
Sure, thank you for sharing, Isla. I'm really excited to hear that you had a good experience. Did you also present to your peers about your experience? I'm just curious.
Um, I didn't give that presentation to my peers, but I have talked about it or like spoken about it to my friends. Like I said before, I didn't know that you could just come to city council meetings. So that was interesting. And I also know a lot of my friends or just people at my school would be interested in that sort of thing, like they want to go into careers such as local government. And so I think that making it known to like those students is good, because I think a lot of people from my school specifically would definitely be interested in that sort of thing.
Was there any city staff who outreach to you regarding our surveys, like the WORF survey or the pickleball survey, just to get, you know, I think this, she's our in to the youth. Was there any collaboration in that department, Isla?
Um, there was some collaboration with Joe Clark. He helped with the program a little bit. Also, Yvette Brooks helped a lot with the program. She guided me through a lot of that and like gave me a lot of opportunities within the program, so that was pretty great.
That's cool. I'd love to see this expanded and see more integration and bring in more youth. I think about you guys all the time, because you guys are a very important voice and unfortunately don't have the voting power right now, but soon will. And it's a really important voice to amplify, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. So I would like to say thank you for being here as well. I think having youth involved in politics and city government is extremely important. You saw my grandson here tonight. I think youth needs to learn how to be involved, and we need to be welcoming to you so that you can be involved. So I appreciate what you've done, and I hope to see this program continue. Thank you.
Well, great job, Isla. Thank you for taking the time to present to us and all that are in attendance. I hope that this is just the drop that starts the ripples in the water. I really hope that we can continue this program and get your friends to join. And, you know, there's so much that I've learned just by being involved in the last five, six years that your knowledge will continue to expand, so congratulations and thanks for being a part of it.
And just to echo, yeah, thank you for being involved. And please, reach out to your friends and your fellow students to have them involved. And believe me, these rooms are not that full all the time. There's also Planning Commission meetings that you can attend, and which doesn't ever have anybody at most of the time. So it's great to see that, you know, youth wanted to be involved in everything, and thanks again for participating.
Lastly, thank you, Isla. I think it'll be easy for us to find another council member that's going to step up and be another youth liaison, so we'll start working on that. Thanks so much.
Thank you again.
Presentation from our historical career here. Welcome.
Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to kind of update you on changes that we've had at the Capitola Museum over the last four years. That's how long I've been here now. My name's Deborah Osterberg, and I did grow up in Capitola, so I'm very proud to be able to take care of my hometown museum. We've got some slides here to take a look at, just to give you an overview of what the museum is. Here, put this down so it might be on my tippy toes. We have actually three historic structures. The museum itself is circa 1920s Live Oak Farmhouse. The Beach Cottage dates from 1907, and the Bath House, we think is about 1930. We do an annual exhibition every year, and it's March through December. The other two months I use for taking down the old and putting up the new. We have a museum Board of Trustees and our Board President. Our new Board President is here today. He's standing up behind me here, Brian Legakis. Longtime board member, brand-new president. We have a volunteer program, because even though I am the only city employee dealing with the museum, part-time, 20 hours, we can only keep the doors open thanks to our volunteer staff, which now consists of about 45 volunteers, and last year alone, they did 600 hours for us. We have a collection, storage items, because what you see in the museum is only a small part, and we think it's about 10,000 objects, but I'll be talking about that later. We also have an exhibit case at the Capitola Library, which I change about four to five times a year, so take a look at that when you have a chance. We can switch to the next slide. I wanted to mention some of our visitation. I came in 2020, and of course, this is after the COVID's major shutdown. But prior to COVID, we had 6,796 visitors in 2019. Because of COVID, the museum can only be open about two weeks. That's why there were less than 100 people that got to be here that year. But we rebounded in 2021 with over 5,900. And I want to point out the three exhibits that I've done. In 2022, we went up to over 8,100 people. On 2023, we went over to 8,800, and just over that again in 2024. One thing we also want to consider is there are people that come and look at the Beach Cottage exhibit and the Bath House, don't necessarily come into the museum, so we'd like to add on like another 20% to cover that. So I would say that we now are getting over 10,000 people a year in our tiny little museum. And we are only open three days a week. Well, not yet, but Friday, Saturday, Sunday afternoons, noon to four. This is our current exhibit, which is the Naughty Surf. It's fashion turning points in Capitola from the 1860s to the 1960s. It's basically how we went from the Victorian bathing costume to the bikini. So if you haven't stopped in yet, please do. We can switch to the next slide. I just wanted to kind of go over some of the additions that I've made since I've been curator. I'm happy that I was the first one to put up a local indigenous people's acknowledgement, both in the museum and online on our website. Also, a couple of years ago, I helped with the commissioning of the painting that you see here, the original, and now there's a copy in the exhibit, The First People of Capitola, beautiful painting by Ann Thierman, local artist, because I wanted to represent the full history of Capitola. I also created this year the first permanent exhibit case in our museum to tell the stories of local indigenous people who are the, are the Aptos and Kayastaka, though now represented by more modern versions of those tribes. I also want to let you know that I've integrated their stories into the rest of the exhibits when I can, and I've also been trying to add diversity into our collections each year. Created a new exhibit case on Martina Castro Lodge, who was our grantee of Rancho Soquel, so very important lady. Also, did a new permanent Capitola history timeline display in the exhibit. We have now two electronic photo frames that allow for more images to be seen. Also installed the first QR codes in the exhibit, some people want to read more about something in particular. I've improved the bookstore displays. And also thanks to Brian, he created a stereo viewer station for one exhibit, and we're keeping it now, and so kids can understand that 3D is not a new concept. It's been around a long time. And we also have a smart TV where we can access our YouTube channel. Yes, we do have a museum YouTube channel. It's got a lot of wonderful historic oral histories in it. You can change the screen there. But probably some of the biggest changes recently has been our museum landscape outside. We have now a new native plant garden, and the project actually got started because my cousin, Owen Lawson, was doing his Eagle Scout project. So he organized the about 20-some scouts and their parents to actually clear the area of River Rock and get us ready. And our volunteer gardeners, Steve Kaiser and Mary O'Neil, have been doing a great job planting items there. We first consulted with the Amman Woodson Land Trust for some advice, but our volunteers are going to continue completing the rest of it. We have a new brick patio. We have new handicap access out to the Bath House. Improved safety for people using the photo op of the streetcar that Frank Hill painted. We now have our sign facing street traffic, and we have a new sandwich board and opening signs that have really brought people in, especially that sandwich board, which we put on our patio, and that has brought a lot of people in. You can go to the next slide. On social media, we're definitely present. There's that YouTube channel. To date, 792 subscribers and over 100,000 views of those wonderful 50-plus videos online. Other museum media, I try to do three to four articles annually in the local papers. And if you look at those historic pictures every Sunday in the focal point in the Santa Cruz Sentinel, I'm responsible for coordinating that with other museums. The museum website, try to keep it up to date. And Facebook, I do five to 10 monthly posts, and I'm really proud of the fact since 2020, we went from 1,470 followers to over 3,100 now. Very exciting. Also want to point out that my predecessor, Frank Perry, did a beautiful website on Henry Allen Rispin and 1920s Capitola. He did it because it was the anniversary of the Rispin Mansion. Of course, that's right when COVID hit. So I'm hoping to get more play now with the Rispin Garden, soon to be coming online. So take a look if you haven't already. We can switch to the next screen. It should be outreach, I think, yep. We participate in the festivals like, of course, Art and Wine and the Beach Festival. By the way, we are the reigning champion of the Lighted Nautical Parade. First place last year gave $1,000 to the museum, and we are going to bring it again this year, so. We do special events with other museums around the area. In fact, this Saturday, I'll be at Seacliff State Beach. They're doing their Ocean Fest, and they invited us to participate. So if you can come, they're starting things at noon over there at Seacliff Beach. I have expanded exhibits into the Bath House, also Capitola Mall and the Police Annex. And we've done some outgoing exhibit loans to other local museums, because I meet with the Santa Cruz Museums and Galleries Group every other month. And I'm hoping to start outreach to local schools. Our two new volunteers are former school teachers, and I'm really excited to work with them to try to get things started in that venue, because I think that's extremely important. And finally, the last slide I have is showing you the museum collections, some of those estimated 10,000 items, and less than half of them are catalogued. And a lot of them are still in their cardboard boxes, very bad. I've been trying over the past couple of years to change things over into some museum-quality museum storage containers. And you can see there that picture, the young lady is our youth representative who just graduated and is going to be leaving us, Juliette Thompson, but she's been fantastic and was volunteering with me on this. We did a lot of things to repackage as we go along. We completed a complete inventory of our art and archives storage. We completed a complete inventory of our art and archives storage room and only partway through the artifacts storage room. And those wonderful little schematics you see were done by our outgoing president of the board, Emmy Mitchell Lynn, because until then, we did not have any locations on the shelves for items. So, and I just want to let you know that this is going to be one of my main focus in the coming year, along with education. But it's also going to be a multi-year project. It's very intensive. I have a background with the National Park Service and National Archives, and I want to bring our collection up to museum standards like it should be. Starfish. Yes, and we do have a couple of starfish. All right, well, that is pretty much my presentation. I just wanted to let you know what we are composed of, what we've done, and some of the things that we are about to do. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll start over here with Councilwoman Westman.
Thank you for the presentation. I've always thought the Capitola Museum was one of the unique jewels that we have in our town, and it's nice to see that it's being so well taken care of and expanded. So thank you for all your efforts.
Well, thanks.
Thanks, yes, for the presentation and for all of your hard work. I love walking by like almost every morning and there's something new that's been planted or reconstructed outside. And so it's really bringing a nice facelift to the museum. And I'm so stoked that so many people are attending. It's great. So congratulations to you and thank you for all the hard work.
Yeah, we had our first 200-person day on Memorial Day.
Ditto all the comments. You're doing such a great job. It's so great to see the new exhibits and the organization you're putting in to put it up, to bring it up to standard. Thank you for all that you're doing.
Thanks.
Thank you, but please also take it back to your board. And when you have me, the museum is really based off a lot of volunteers and the hours that they put in. So please let them know from a council perspective, we really appreciate all their additional work that they do in the volunteering. They really like set the message and the tone as people park in the parking lot, walking into Capitola, you know, they can really set the tone on what's going on in the history of Capitola. So thank you again and please pass on to them.
A big thank you to our volunteers. We call them our ambassadors, because like I said, we wouldn't have the doors open without them.
So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Deborah. I want to just say, I saw you on TV. I hope we don't lose you to Hollywood or anything, but.
Right. Yes, the ghost story, yes.
It was awesome. You did a great job, so.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you for that.
Hopefully Carolyn and I look like historians, though.
You did.
You did.
Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to oral communications, could staff get a three-minute break while we work on the timer system? It seems to have gone out on us.
We would love to. Thank you.
Good, yeah, it's up. It just took like.
If we could all find our seats. This will bring us to item number six, oral communications by members of the public. You have three minutes to speak on things that are not on the agenda. Welcome.
Thank you. I see you can also comment on consent items at this time. And I just read this, and I'd like to recommend a no vote on G. It says, "Adopt a resolution approving an interfund loan of $856,000 from the General Fund to the Library Fund." I've been quite dismayed recently by the libraries, because they, as they remodel them, they get rid of all the old books. It's like getting rid of history and they're becoming like computer centers. And as someone who feels ill from the radiation from Wi-Fi, and it's not funny, I rarely go to the library. It's very disturbing to me, looking at the museum slides and looking at old books and items and reading the treasure, treasures of information in old books. That's what I like. Anyway, I'd like to quote Mark Twain, who said, "It ain't what you don't know that's the problem, it's what you know for sure that just ain't so." And I say that quote in relation to a book called Can You Catch a Cold: Untold History of Human Experiments, written and published by Daniel Roytus. And we've all heard, "You can catch a cold, be careful, don't get..." It starts out, the book review in Wise Traditions issue of Fall 2024. "In today's culture, this book's title may seem like a dumb question. It is difficult for the average person to believe that what they've been told all their lives is wrong. In the case of contagion, surely there must be a mountain of scientific evidence that the common cold is contagious. Have you looked?" Author Daniel Roytus has. Another book on the topic reviewed in Wise Traditions of Fall 2024. "An End to Upside-Down Medicine: Contagion Viruses and Vaccines and Why Consciousness Is Needed for a New Paradigm of Health." Personally, I remember when my daughter got very, very ill from the DPT shot, and I'm sorry to this day that I had her injected. "One virus never proven to exist is polio. Goldberg explains..."
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Okay, I will leave you copies of this, but polio symptoms are DDT poisoning symptoms. And I'll give you this. And I ran off with your clipboard last time, so I'm returning it. Look, it's the same color as mine. Oh, good, I'm so glad to make you happy that I did that.
Pleasure to see you, Marilyn.
Welcome.
Hey, can I talk again? Oh, right. I don't mean to have a loud voice. So, you know, there's just so many interesting things going on. I may say through the end, I started, I was hoping that a live broadcast, Mini Ice Age Conversations, which is 10 to midnight Eastern Standard Time. Ransom, Christopher Godwin, and David DeBiner, probably two of the best presenters that I track on the planet, actually. It's interesting, I listened to the first couple of minutes. Ransom was implying that everything we're seeing in LA is artificial intelligence. It's all just perfectly planned. You know, I've had a sticker on my truck for at least 24 years. Says, "Artificial intelligence is no match for natural stupidity." But who trained the artificial intelligence? So I'm, I think of Mark Twain often, you know? I wasn't there, he wrote a lot of stuff. His, he spent 10 years writing the book about Joan of Arc, really quite amazing. But Samuel Clemens, about voting. If it really mattered, you think they'd let us do it? He had quite the sense of humor. So this document contains our Declaration of Independence, and I'm not sure which one of the three US constitutions it has. I'll have to find that out, but it is a great document under Article Four, Section Four. United States shall guarantee to every state in the Union a republican form of government. What is a republican form of government? It's one where people vote for certain people to represent them, having faith that they're actually being represented, which I wish was the case, but it is often not in our corporate world. So I wasn't really joking about what kind of confidentiality agreements you guys signed to turn over your actual powers to support the people to an unelected city manager. And that's just the truth. It's a hard question. I signed a confidentiality agreement once as a general contractor. A guy needed to shut me up. I'm sure you can imagine why. I worked for him off and on for 18 years. So I'm actually here because I care. It is a really interesting time for reasons I would much rather be talking about than being critical of, are the people actually being represented by the people? And the easiest thing I can say is you look at that US and California flag with a corporate maritime fringe on it, and you look outside the building and you've got American flag and a California flag that don't have that fringe. It means something very different. It's just nice to be here and see you all. We're all doing the best we can. Had a magical day, got to meet a single mom, also has identical twins. I'm an identical twin. It's a fun day. Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Karen Hannah. This is actually something for the parents of the junior guards now that the sessions have started. They need to be reminded that their parking pass is only good in the lower parking lot. Many are parking in the paid parking spaces down in the village, but not paying, because the wording on the permit is a little confusing, I guess. It says beach and village parking. And, but that's what, sometimes they refer to that parking lot as a beach and village parking lot. It should be called parking lot number two or lower parking lot. No one wants them to be ticketed, but, and many are parking in the lot down there. I see them walking down with the kids and that's great, and we really thank them. And I think they appreciate the pass. But if whoever's in charge of communicating with the parents could remind them of where they're supposed to park to use those permits, it would be appreciated. Our visitors are struggling to find parking in the village. And the revenue from parking is down, so let's free up those spaces for people who are actually paying for the spaces. So I think that would really be appreciated by everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Just have a very simple, single request. On tonight's agenda, the sense that consent items aren't available for public communication, under item C, there's a request to approve a administrative services agreement. And I think that most of the council members probably are aware that the Finance Advisory Committee is meeting on Tuesday, that we're going to be reviewing all the external services contracts that the city has. So I would just request the council to at least postpone this for one meeting until after the FAC has had a chance to include it in our review. Thank you.
Thank you. See, no further public comment. I'll take it to staff comments.
I just have one quick announcement. Our museum curator meant to mention that if anyone is interested, a copy of our Hot Off the Press's newest museum newsletter is available at the back of the room for anyone who's interested. There's extra copies printed up there.
I have one additional announcement, Mayor. With the appointment of Ms. Westman to the City Council, it creates an unscheduled vacancy on our planning commission. We had a great number of people turn out for the application process for the City Council, and now that there is an opportunity to participate in the city on the planning commission, I hope that they will consider applying for that vacancy as well. Staff will be notifying the public through legal advertisement and other methods about the unscheduled vacancy, most likely tomorrow. But members of the public can apply right now. There's a link on our homepage on our city website where interested members of the public can apply. Thanks.
Thank you for that announcement. We'll open it up to council members' comments.
I just want to say I'm very happy to be here and I'm looking forward to working with you. I think we can do great things in the next 18 months.
Yes, welcome Ms. Westman to the council. This week, or yesterday evening, it feels like a week ago, but last night, I attended the AMBAG meeting as the alternate for Councilmember Orbach. It was actually a relatively quick meeting. It was just more of an update. Just thought some members of the community might want to know. We, through our AMBAG position, we approved a letter to NOAA regarding the Moss Landing Fire, requesting for more process and research regarding air and soil quality, not only after that incident, but, you know, other incidents that may or may not happen around that. We are there in good financial standing, so just a heads up on that. And this weekend, on Saturday, is our annual Hot Rod Custom Car Show in the Village. Be mindful of road closures, but it's also a really great event. So if you can come down and walk around, it's free admission and it's a lot of fun. So, thanks.
We're still with council comments at this moment. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Westman. I mean it when I said I'm open and excited and looking forward to working with you in good faith and moving our agenda forward to make progress and improvements for the city of Capitola. I also wanted to make some comments regarding the recent residency questions that have been raised. I just want to point out that this has never been an issue in the history of Capitola, so why is it an issue now? There is a reason why there is no other jurisdictions in California with a proof of residency requirement, because it's likely illegal. This whole residency question really just didn't sit well, sit in right with me. I felt like it was the extension of the politically motivated campaign against Councilmember Peterson and really reminded me of the many comments I have heard and read about in terms of how renters are not here to stay or committed enough to Capitola to deserve a seat at the table or have their voices be heard and represented. Almost 54% of our residents in Capitola are renters. Not everyone can afford to buy a home here, let alone have the privilege of owning multiple homes in different cities. The policies we make here affect all of our citizens, owners and renters alike. I don't have an issue with the active residency verification in and of itself, because... because residency is already a requirement. It's the motive behind these additional redundant and unnecessary requirements that bothers me. It's the undertone of discrimination, exclusion, and the sense of entitlement. It's as if being a renter here isn't as deserving, and it feels like we're setting the stage to intimidate and exclude renters from running in 2026. I would really like to stop wasting staff time and resources on efforts that could potentially dissuade many residents from participating in our local government at a time when we need more participation, not less.
Thank you. Let's see, a couple of things, last week, attended Beach Village Cleanup. Also stopped by, a little bit immobilized, stopped by the Rissman Park Cleanup and saw our mayor Clark out there with his lovely family, Marilyn and his grandson Jeremiah, doing a ton of cleanup, I was rooting them on. Great job, thank you Joe for all your hard work, and I don't know if you guys snuck by the bees, but I really appreciate that. Also attended the first concert last night, which was just absolutely amazing, completely full. Nice to see the Astronaut Park back in the summer concert series, back on. And then, one thing, I was reading the paper, that it was sad to see that one of our, I think, leaders in our community from the standpoint of journalism, that John D. Gumm is going to be retiring. She worked at the Sentinel, she worked for the Zokel Capitola Times. She covered our local issues fair and balanced, and it was nice to see her coverage on all the issues, very, you know, small issues to talking about car shows to bigger issues that were going on in Capitola when I've run for office. You know, her questions were direct, concise, and very hard. And so, one thing I'd like to see, I could work with the mayor, that we could do a proclamation for John D., for all her years of service and what she has done for our community representing the local voices. So I'd like to work with you and see maybe we could do that before. I know she's going to be relocating with her family, but it'd be something that I think would be, that we should recognize that. And that's all my comments I have today.
I would like to support the resolution for John D. She has covered Capitola for at least 35 years and always did a fair job, even though, you know, I personally didn't agree with a few of her comments. She was always fair, straightforward, and I think having good news coverage of what goes on in our council meetings is extremely important. It's one of the few ways, in addition to, you know, broadcasting the meeting, that we have the opportunity to let the community know what's happening and going on. So she did a nice job, and I think it would be appropriate to recognize her.
Yeah, John D. will surely be missed, very fair and very balanced, so we will definitely do that. Definitely get to work on that. But also, I just want to say, it's summertime, let's get out and enjoy all these great things that are going on in Capitola. Last night, the first concert, this Saturday, all the hot rods. Just get out and celebrate with each other and take care of each other, so. We'll be moving on. That'll bring us to consent items, number eight.
I'd like a motion to move Items 8A to 8J.
I would like to pull one thing, if we could have a, just a quick adjustment to the meeting minutes from 5:22. I think it listed, I think it's just a typo, Alexander Peterson, who's still in there as Vice Mayor, and I don't think he was at the meeting. So if we just clean that up as we go through the vote. And then, just if we could pull Item 8J, I'd like to have a presentation on that item. And then, a crucial question to the city manager regarding Item 8C, after the staff comment from the public. Is there an issue with them waiting for the fact, if they're fact of reviewing those contracts? Or is there a time limit connected to that, to have that taken care of, that could come back to our next meeting, or what would be your guidance on that?
There is in fact a time limit, there's a five-year limit in terms of the CDPG contracts, and the last contract was ended into five years ago in four days. So I don't think we'd want to go out of compliance with our CDPG contracts, given the amount of money that we have in play right now.
Okay, thank you, that, so that would just be pulling, just making that correction on the one meeting minute, if we could, and then if we could pull Item 8J.
So I think I need to recuse myself from Item A and Item B since it's the minutes in the check register, since I was not here when those things took place.
Roll in from our attorney.
So if, I don't know if we want to pull those two items and have you vote on those separately, or how the mayor would like to handle it.
I modify my motion?
Sorry.
Here's my suggestion. Why don't you modify your motion, Councilmember Orbach, to move for approval of consent items C... Yes. C to, well, you could do C to J, and Councilmember Westman could vote, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Westman could vote on C through J, she just recusing from A and B.
I think we're pulling J, and we'll see that at the end of the, end of the calendar.
Okay.
And then, we could do that, and then do A and B separately.
Okay. So I move consent items 8C to 8I. I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brings us to A and B only.
Consent items A and B.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Does Ms. Westman need to recuse first? Oh, she made a statement already, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent items are passed, and we will have J at the end of our agenda, Item J. That brings us to General Government. Item A.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight for your review are the City Council appointments to regional boards and city advisory committees. Staff recommends that the council review and update the current city council appointments on multi-jurisdictional and county boards and commissions, and then review and update city council representation on the Finance Advisory Committee for the city. So as a reminder, Capitola is represented on various multi-jurisdictional and regional advisory bodies. These groups are established by other codes and bylaws, not by the city. With the resignation of Councilmember Peterson, there are vacancies on a couple of these groups. But at this time, if the city council wished to make changes from their other appointments, they could do so to kind of shift things around. So the first group that we'll be reviewing is the Regional Transportation Commission, the RTC. So the current representatives were Councilwoman Peterson and Mayor Clark as the alternate. So tonight, we are requesting that a new representative is established. The next meeting date is in August in Scott Valley. The local, I'm sorry, the Integrated Waste Management Local Task Force. This is currently represented by a staff member, but Councilwoman Peterson was the alternate. So staff recommends appointing a new alternate. The next meeting date is in September, and again, the alternate is not expected to attend the meeting, so long as staff is able to attend. And then the Metropolitan Transit District Board, known as Metro. The current representative is Councilwoman Orbach. Councilwoman Peterson served as an alternate, staff recommends appointing a new alternate to this group. The next meeting date will be June 27th in the council chambers, so very convenient location for all of you, hopefully. I'll set it back. Then, like I mentioned, there is a vacancy due to Councilmember Peterson's resignation on the city's advisory body for the FAC. And so staff recommends appointing a new council member representative to the FAC. The current FAC bylaws state that the mayor and vice mayor serve on this board unless either one or both don't want to serve, in which case another council member can serve. And so staff would recommend appointing a new council member representative to that group as well. And so with these groups, as I mentioned, they're not established by the city, so we do require a motion and a vote to make any changes to the appointments. Typically, the other groups request a copy of our minutes to verify the appointments. And so tonight, staff is recommending, after public comment, to make a motion to appoint a council representative to the RTC, an alternate to the Integrated Waste Management Local Task Force, an alternate to Metro, and a representative on the FAC. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Council questions?
Do the people who are on the current boards want to stay where they are? I mean, I'm the new person.
I think we get to get them all. No, I'm just teasing. Yeah, I think maybe after we have comment, we can just go through item by item by item and see who will want to put themselves out for it. No other council questions, it'll open to public comment? No, not, that's... It certainly is, we're just, we're just talking about appointments right now for council members? Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome.
Again. I'm able to understand you, so I just wanted to, you're welcome, you're welcome. Can you understand me? Okay, okay, because sometimes I talk aloud, so. I would like to nominate Councilmember Jen, nominate, like I'm on the council here. Mr. Jensen for RTC, I think that he would be excellent. He is one of the few people that has been proactive in coming out to the community and talking with us to find out what's going on. And I really feel that he's embedded in the community and really wants to work on that, whatever his position is. I'm neither train nor trail, but it's, I think he would be good. If not Susan Westman, but, and Margo, you might be good too, but I don't know.
Thank you. Further public comment? Great, I'll bring it back to council deliberation? Or do we just want to start and go through item by item at this time?
I can pull up the slides again, Mayor, just give me one second.
Thank you.
So the first group up for discussion is the Regional Transportation Commission. And so again, this is for the full representation of the council, not the alternate position, unless the council wishes to change things around, in which case.
Well, on this particular one, I do want to stay on as the alternate, and I would like to ask Councilwoman Jensen if you would want to take the position. I know it's a lot, it's very important to us, but I want to stay on as the alternate, would like to see Mr. Jensen step into there.
Yeah, I'll accept that, if the rest of the council's in favor of that.
We go item by item and get a vote?
Thank you, so the next item would be the Integrated Waste Management Local Task Force. Again, this one is staffed by a staff member, and so this would just be for the alternate position.
I would be happy to take that alternate position.
Great, in which case, the next group would be the alternate for Metro, unless the council wished to make any other changes.
That was... Councilmember Orbach's going to continue. Again, I'd be happy to be the alternate, Lynn.
Wonderful, and then that leaves the council's representative on the Finance Advisory Committee. So as a reminder, the group's bylaws state that the mayor and vice mayor will serve on this group unless one or both do not wish to serve, in which case it could be filled from another council member. And so right now, we have Councilmember Morgan serving on the FAC, and so we're just looking for one other council member representative.
Oh.
Would you like to take it?
I would be happy.
I'd love to see enough.
To be the other council representative, I love city budgets.
Our finance director will be thrilled.
Ew.
Thank you.
And so with that, I have the direction from the council. I'm just looking for a motion and a second to make these.
I asked for one more favor, we do need a position for another liaison, for their youth liaison position. I would love to see Councilmember Orbach, I know she's got a lot on her plate, but...
When are the meetings?
They vary, and it just...
Is it up, is it up for reappointment?
It was, past Mayor Brooks was our second person on the liaison.
Oh, I see, so I'd be the alternate?
Just a secondary person.
Oh, a secondary person, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Now we'd be looking for a motion.
I will move inviting Ms. Westman onto the FAC as a member with me for council representation, and then the alternate on Metro along with the Waste Management and Councilmember Jensen as the main representation on the RTC.
I'll second that motion.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Councilwoman Westman?
Yeah, aye.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Thanks so much.
Motion passes. Now that brings us to Item B. Castle Mobile Home Estates Overview. Welcome.
Thank you, council, good evening. So tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of the Castle Mobile Home Estates and give you an update regarding the encroachments. So the park was, it's located at 1099 38th Avenue. It was purchased or acquired on July of 2011, and it is an affordable park. There's 108 spaces, and if we go to the next slide. The city participated in the acquisition of this park. There's $2 million of redevelopment money that went into this park. $1 million of those dollars were for the acquisition to purchase the park, working with Millennium, and then the other million was for $100,000 in rehabilitation and rent subsidies for a 10-year period. 85 of the 108 units are affordable at different rates. And currently, we have two rehabilitation loans that are active. There were 10 originally at the time of acquiring the park. There are two remaining at just a little over $100,000. Next slide, please. So there's rent control on this park. The numbers you're seeing here are from 2011, where owner occupants were paying $650 for their space rent, and then non-owner occupants, renters, were paying $800, and that's tied to CPI for annual increases. Next slide, please. So why we're here tonight talking about this wonderful Capitola park is the adjacent project for the RTC and the rail trail. There are a number of encroachments, about 20 encroachments, that go over the park property line into the RTC property. And in working forward with the rail trail, the RTC has been in communication with the park. They conducted an encroachment review that is published, it's online. We also have a link to it from our rail trail page on our website. Next slide, please. And so the city has been, we've been working as a convenor with both Millennium, who owns the park, and their nonprofit organization, who owns the land underneath the park, and then also with the RTC, and bringing them both to the table. In March of this year, our city manager and I, we sat down with both, well, I guess it was a Zoom call, but with RTC as well as Millennium. And then, following that meeting, we followed up with a letter and had a few requests just for a proposed path forward. The first item was to put together a tolling agreement so that more time could be taken. This is going through legal steps, it puts it kind of on hold so that the two parties can work through some of the legal, they can do some negotiations without the pressures of the legal. Also to extend those deadlines, because the deadlines were coming up fast, and it would give them more time to have those, open that communication. And then, we talked, there was a request that they start working on some type of mobile home assistance program tied to these encroachments to make sure that the residents can stay in the park, and we're addressing this as a path forward. And then there were also, the RTC was in need of getting onto the mobile home property in order to do more surveying, and so we also offered to be there for the survey and be present as the city, just so that they can get the... and be present as the city, just so that they can get the correct dimensions in order to find a path forward. Without those surveys, they're not quite sure what exactly the fix will be in terms of they need to move structures. So next slide. So that, the outcome of that letter is the RTC put together a proposal for tolling. Right now, it's under review by Millennium Housing, and they're having productive conversations. So the RTC has talked with the, the people from Millennium, and they're working through the idea of a tolling agreement, and then they'll continue to work through these. And our, I haven't had much experience working with the, with Millennium in the past, but I know Jamie was involved back when that was acquired, and their, their management there and ownership there are just wonderful people to work with. They're great negotiators. So they're, it's great, they're all, they're all coming to the table and talking. And you know, if we go to the next slide, I think as we go through this, we'll continue our role as the convener. And then really, we're looking for a mutually beneficial outcome to this, to protect our residents within Capitola, but also make sure that, you know, we'll be working with them and, and also to do some site coordination. So with that, I am available for questions and.
Counsel questions? I'll start over here.
First of all, thank you, Katie, for the presentation, and I appreciate our city's outreach that we've done to the mobile home park. One question that I had for you is, we've given assistance to some of those tenants over there in the past for fixing up of their coaches and stuff. Are we, do you know what those, like, mounts were, or how that program worked and stuff? And is it still in play today?
Yeah, so when we acquired the park, there were 10 loans for rehab given out, and the total amount of dollars, it was a little less than $250,000 between the 10. Right now, that, there's two loans that are continued. They're still active and a little over $100,000. So, and it is tied to a percentage increase every year, but yeah, as people move out, they typically pay off those loans with the sale of their units.
So there's just two open at this present time?
There's two, yep.
Perfect. Let's see. At this time, that's all the questions. But again, thank you for reaching out to my note. The, the community over there definitely appreciates the step that the city has taken, and thank you for your leadership on that.
Thanks for the presentation, Katie. This is obviously a political nightmare for the RTC and has caused a lot of stress to our residents at the mobile home, at Castle Mobile Homes. I know it sounds like we've got a really good working relationship with Jamie, having been there in 2011 to help with the acquisition with, with Millennium Housing, as well as the owner, George Turk, is it? I think it's really important that we continue to help both of them come to the table and resolve some of these issues. My question is, can we use some of the housing trust funds that we have for a housing rehabilitation assistance program similar to the one we did for Dakota Apartments and utilize a contract with, like Habitat for Humanity to help assist with?
So for the first part, we have different buckets of funding, special funding, that goes towards housing. And so there's a possibility that we could utilize some of those funds towards this. In terms of Habitat for Humanity, I would have to lean on them and find out. But it maybe is an option. They, I was, I would have to see if it aligns with their programming, because I know a lot of their mission is for ownership, I believe, of houses. So whether or not they would take that on, I know with the rehab program we actively, we have going on right now, it's for ownership housing. And so whether or not they could work on some and not others, it just depends on what their mission is and their policies.
Got it. And also, I know Councilmember Jensen had founded Random Acts of Capitola Kindness, RAC, and they've done some great work in the community, including building fences along the bluffs in Debo, Debo Hill. Can we get our community volunteers to come together to help with relocating some of the fences? And I believe there are 13 fences that need to be relocated. Councilmember Jensen?
Always ready and willing.
Awesome. Thank you.
Questions over here.
I don't have any questions at this time. I'll wait till we do council comments.
So I just wanted to clarify, RTC has not surveyed any of the properties or encroachments?
I believe they did an initial survey, but they need more details and accuracy so that they can address the issues and make sure that they know the exact measurements and also internal measurements. So if they were to move one of the homes, to make sure there's still enough width for drive aisles and that kind of, so they, they need to take it another step.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. Have we reached out to the affected folks and then stayed in contact with them? Because a lot of them, there's a lot of uncertainty.
You know, RTC has been in touch with them, and Millennium have been in touch with them, but I, I honestly, as staff, we have not reached out or sent any letters to the property owners that are affected.
Great. Maybe as we move forward and, and we see some of this go through, we can reach out a little bit. I guess, no further council questions? I'll bring it to public comment. Thank you for that.
Hello. So, I mean, I can be quite as funny as my normal personality, but my name is Kami Corvin. I live in Castle Mobile Estates in Capitola. First, I'd like to extend a great warm welcome to Susan Westman. Thank you so much for, for coming up and stepping up, and really do appreciate that. I also want to thank the entire council, especially Councilwoman Jensen, for placing Castle Mobile Estates on the agenda and allowing us to have this critical discussion. I think it's super important. Your support means a great deal to us, and I appreciate the thoughtful questions that many of you have been asking. However, I do want to acknowledge that Councilwoman Jensen has been the only member who has actually reached out to us at Mobile Homes there at Castle and asking the questions that we're challenging and facing with our homes. But I would like to also extend the opportunity to have any of you contact me. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I promise that I won't bite. So, no matter what you've heard. So tonight, I'd like to highlight a specific concern that I believe warrants clear answers. And I'd like to read a portion of an email that raises some serious questions about the consistency and fairness of the RTC actions. So the corridor width at 41st Avenue in Capitola, where the condominiums are, and I believe they're called Capitola Villas, I think that's where it's at, is equivalent to the same width as Capitola Mobile Estates, assuming that there are no encroachments or present. If that is accurate, I would like to know why the RTC is requiring the removal of these encroachments behind Castle Mobile Estates, but not imposing the same requirements on 41st where the condominiums are. This inconsistency raises troubling concerns about unequal treatment of homeowners and suggests a possibility of discrimination decision-making. I urge the RTC, the commissioners, and the council here to publicly clarify the objective standards being used to determine when encroachment enforcements are necessary. Additionally, I'd like to clarify a couple of points on the tolling agreement. According to an email that I received this afternoon, and I quote, "Nothing has been signed and nothing has been negotiated." The email made it clear to the RTC that the tolling agreement as currently presented will not be signed. Management is awaiting directions from their attorney moving forward. The only communication on this matter, aside from the phone calls from RTC and Mr. Goldstein requesting updates, has been from the RTC to George Kirk, indicating that the attorneys might meet on Monday to discuss these issues. Once again, I respectfully ask for transparency, clarity in moving forward. Misleading statements in concept reports that, for example, depict a train only in Segment 10 and do not provide the whole picture. It's not accurate, it's not consistent, and this information is important for the council members, RTC, and commissioners so that they can make their decisions. And I have a map for you guys.
Thank you.
Just in case. There you go. You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Jacques Pertrand here. I remember when this first issue came up, when this issue first came up, it took a long time for any traction, any involvement. So hats off to Capitola for showing leadership on a very critical issue for our residents. I remember early on that the residents just were in abeyance. There's no direction, no thought of what they're going to have to face, whether it's moving their mobiles, losing their homes. And some people there, obviously, were very worried about the financial impact of that. So my hats off for this engagement. I think it exemplifies the spirit of Capitola, caring about its citizens. We have a significant number of people that are in mobiles here. They are citizens as well as anyone else. I'm very happy for the involvement here. One thing I'd like to know, I was on the RTC for, I forgot how many years. You know, doesn't matter really. But making sure this is a regular item on the RTC that the, the manager, excuse me, the executive director, I don't know what the person in charge right now is called, executive director, or, yeah, okay, is actually reporting on, because I think the pressure has to be kept up. I don't think we should let up on this. It's, it's something that could be pushed off to the side, and I don't want to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and congratulations, Councilmember Susan Westman. I come before you tonight to urge you to prioritize our community over the RTC project. In particular, I ask that we place the needs of our most vulnerable low-income senior citizens above those of the RTC. We have recently discovered that the RTC, which Kami gave a map, I have it here, I'd be happy to give it, share with you, has previously threatened evictions, arrests, and even discussed eminent domain against our low-income senior citizens. Yes, this group has made accommodations to narrow the rail trail at the Capitola Beach Villas. It seems the villas at 41st Avenue were built over, well, it looks like a foot or so, into the actual encroaching into the right of way. Interestingly, interesting, the section of 41st Avenue at the Capitola Beach Villas is as narrow, if not narrower than, at the mobile home parks. I think you can confirm this with the RTC, the maps can identify that, and maybe our own city staff can even help you with that. This brings us to the question, why would the RTC make accommodations for the villas but not for our vulnerable community? I heard Councilmember Orbach have quite a discussion, dialogue, about some of these people who may be affected by rent control and these other things. As our representatives and our advocates for our senior citizens, you have the power to alter this narrative from one of tragedy to one of victory. No agreement with RTC and Capitola should proceed without ensuring our seniors remain in their homes. If accommodations can be made for the villas, well, they certainly can be made for our senior citizens. I urge each of you to make that commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
First of all, I want to applaud the city for their efforts. But constantly, through this whole aspect, I'm totally confused and I don't understand something. So let me give you my background. So three summers during college, I worked for the county engineers. One year, I worked for a general contractor, and I'm a former California real estate agent in the state of California. And the, if any of you purchase property, you know that when you purchase your property, one of the things involved is a survey of your property lines, and then the agreement, which then goes through the title company for approval. And then at that point, the, the agreement becomes legal and binding. Okay? So the thing that, that I'm confused about is, in listening to the presentation this evening, the Millennium purchased this property in 2011. The RTC did not purchase the property until 2012. Therefore, they accepted any pre-existing surveys that were, that were existing when they purchased the property. If they, if they had a conflict with that, they should have raised those issues at the time of the purchase. Okay? So the burden of proof is on the RTC to show that the previous surveys were inaccurate and incorrect. And if that's the case, actually, the RTC's recourse is to go to the title company and whatever authority authorized their purchase for them to acquire the railway. So, so because the RTC's purchase is the latest, they effectively accepted all the previous surveys that were there. So I think it'd be nice to ask the RTC why they think they're right. Okay? And what, because under California real estate law, they have no justification for it. Okay? So that's the reason, I'm just confused. I don't understand it. And like I said, my knowledge and my understanding of California law and how it works, I don't know where they're coming from. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Christine, and first I want to thank you guys, the committee, for your support and everything. And, one second. I've been a homeowner in Santa Cruz County for over 50 years. After spending some time in Oregon, I returned to California and purchased a mobile home in Castle Estates. Just a couple of months prior or after moving in, I received the first threatening letter from RTC saying that my home must be moved by June 30th, '25, or they will move it for me. Since there, since then, there have been very few days that I haven't experienced anxiety over this whole situation. I'm speaking today because something needs to be done about the false and misleading claims that RTC continues to spread, especially the idea that a train is coming. They don't have the funding, and what makes them think they're going to have the funding in 20 years from now, when the construction cost will be at least three times higher? These unrealistic promises are only fueling fear and confusion for residents like me. We don't need to keep seeing headlines or hearing claims that the train is coming when there is no concrete plan or funding to make this happen. It's time for the RTC Commission and the City Council to accept the truth that so-called train to nowhere is not going to happen. Please help put an end to this uncertainty. It's impacting real people, real homes, and peace of mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Roxanne Stanley. I think a lot of you guys know me. I've been on the radio, I've been on the news, I've been in the paper regarding this RTC moving down in our backyard at the Castle Mobile Estates. I do believe that the Millennium has been trying to reach out to the RTC, and they're not really responding. I have reached out to Grace Blacksley many a time. She's actually came out. I've invited her out to this area where it is very dangerous to have this path, let alone a train of hopefully maybe 30, 40 years come by. But it's very dangerous because it's a very long, narrow corridor. I am on the end on 38th Avenue. I have seen cars come by 45 miles an hour. You guys have planned with the RTC to say, hey, we're going to do a bike path, and nobody had in mind there were going to be e-bikes going. These kids are going 30 miles an hour, crossing 45 mile an hour 38th Avenue. There's a bloodbath going on right there, and I am right next door. They put up a Speedway to see after I had Ms. Blacksley come out there saying that this is a bloodbath coming to happen. I hope you guys have a conscience to see this happening down the pipeline, because it's going to happen. And I don't, and the arm coming down every 30 minutes, no. I mean, these 12-year-old kids going down on e-bikes, they're not going to stop anytime soon before they cross 38th Avenue, let alone 45th. So I propose that we have taken that path and move it off that track, either to Bromer or to Capitola Road. Because this corridor here on Segment 10 and 11 is a narrow, long corridor. There's nothing to be seen except showers in the back of mobile homes. The dogs barking. Who's going to be quieting those kids in that corridor? We're going to hire people to take that over and say. and say, you know, it's 10 o'clock, everybody off that path. First responders, are they going to be able to get out there? It's better for everyone that's already... I am appalled by this RTC. I'm appalled. I wish they would come back to the board and write down a whole new planning for this trail
Thank you for your comment.
on the back of 38th Avenue. Because it is a bloodbath between 38th and our corridor, 10 and 11.
Welcome.
My name is Damon. And I'm asking you to be our advocates. People are scared. And this plan could get to $4 billion. And it's a single-rail train going back and forth with some sightings. We already have Waymo. And those homes, they won't get reassembled. They'll be junk, labor, conditions of the, those houses are gone. So if this is really going to happen, there's $4 billion. Everyone should get $2 million. And I'm upset, I'm shaken. But I'm asking you, please, $4 billion? Are you going to take homes? And if you do, what are you going to do for them? For a stupid, this is stupid. Don't embarrass yourself, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Jensen, congratulations on your appointment to the RTC. I think that's going to be, you're going to be a great voice. Councilman Jensen and I have had one discussion about this topic recently. But what I want to talk about today is something I think gets overlooked in this process, two things. One is that, while there may be 24 homes on the Castle Estates side and a number that I don't know exactly on the blue and gold side, there's four homes that, of the 24, 20 of them have to have their fence moved. And that's an inconvenience. And I think there's a cost associated with that, and that's going to be negotiated. But there's four homes that property line cuts through their house. And for these people who have, Ms. Stanley is one of them, when I started researching this, I thought RTC is for the Rail Trail Commission. So I'm probably not the only one in the county who thought that. But when I recognize this is a state agency coming in, and I understand they are operating according to their marching orders. But when they start telling residents that if you don't remodel your house by June 30th, we're going to come in with a bulldozer. One of the speakers tonight mentioned the psychological pain that has been inflicted on her, and I think she's not alone. There is also, there's a law in California. They call it the Mobile Home Residency Law. There's a state agency called the Manufactured Mobile Home Protection, I'm sorry, that's another state law, the MMRPA. Maybe that's the same law, I'm not quite sure. But the essence of the law, what I read, is that you can't impose costs on the homeowners in the mobile homes. And when you say tear down your fence or remodel your house or we'll do it for you with a bulldozer and send you a bill, that seems to me to be in direct violation of this law. And clearly, there's a border dispute. Border dispute between Millennium and the RTC, between Millennium and the state of California. And they'll resolve it one way or the other. But if RTC is, ends up owning, and that's resolving that they own this piece of land, congratulations, you own part of a mobile home park and you're subject to the laws of the Home Residency Law. So what I'm, the re-ask I'm having here is, Millennium has their lawyers, the state of California obviously has their lawyers, the city of Capitola has an attorney, and nobody is representing the homeowners. These people, one of them I know wrote a letter to the Manufactured Mobile Home Protection people and filed a claim with that organization. Never heard back. So what I'm asking is that if the city, as a vested protector, if you will, of the residents of this area, will at least do an investigation into what is the legal obligation for the residents of the city? I mean, for these vulnerable residents of the city that the RTC is literally threatening to bulldozer.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me through this? Okay, there we go. Yeah, make this quick. My name is Maria Reuniger, and I've called Castle Mobile Estates my home for 25 years.
I can't hear you, Maria.
You can't? Okay. Test, test, one, two, three. Oh, there we go. Okay, perfect. Yeah, so I've been at Castle as a resident for 25 years. And I really appreciate the council and the mayor's support for Castle and your willingness to address the tough stuff. Welcome. We continue to speak to you today and follow up because we feel the RTC's concept report doesn't quite tell the whole story about our mobile home community, as you've heard reflected in other people's words. It makes moving our homes sound like a walk in the park. But it's actually a massive, expensive undertaking. And plus, there seems to be a pretty big mistake in the numbers. The report says that there are only five homes affected, when it's actually closer to 16. I've also heard 20, that was good to hear today. But that kind of inaccuracy makes us question the reliability of the rest of the report. We're really facing a tough situation here and feeling a bit unheard. It would be fantastic if the council, in conjunction with the RTC, if they could take another look at the report and double-check the facts. Fantastic, well, it would be fantastic. But fairness and openness are really important to us. And we'd love for you to continue to support us at Castle and get the answers from the RTC that we need. And we really need answers. And it's getting long in the truth here, as I would feel. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
I want to applaud the mobile homeowners who are standing up for their rights against the RTC. And I would urge you to support them. There are so many questions of illegality here that they can come and bulldoze your home. I've been seeing a lot on what's happening in Palestine and the bulldozers coming in to the Palestinian homes. And it's like, is this a war on the mobile homeowners here? I think the whole rail trail advertisements and promotion to get people to vote for this did not take into account. It was deceptive of the destruction that would take place, both here and cutting down enormous amounts of trees. I urge you to support these people and oppose what the RTC is doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do you know further, hello, comment? Bring it back to council deliberation unless... Did you have more for us?
No, I'm just here for any questions.
Excellent. Thanks. I'll start over. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you again. So we talked about this RTC rail trail project quite a bit. You know, when we came up on Park Avenue, one of our focuses was to talk about Capitola, you know, two miles across and look at all these issues. And this was one of my main fears, where that there's multiple other different issues that are going on that we need to address. So I think, you know, it puts the city in a tough position where we are. You know, there are our community, our residents. It's not our property. RTC's not, we don't have jurisdiction of that. And so I think, again, this comes to play, that we need to have some questions answered. And so I don't know if that, when the best way, I'll look to the city manager and see how's the best way to get some direct questions to the RTC and see how they come back. I know Councilmember Orbach has requested and we come back sometime in July or early August, whenever that's going to be. But maybe when they come back, we can have some direct questions for them, point by point. And maybe we can open that up. You know, from council comments and council questions that they can come and try to help clarify some of these questions that are causing so much unease in our community. I know there's issues about potential, I think Councilmember Orbach, myself, and maybe other council members have walked with Rob Timmore. There's some other areas that the rail trail might have some conflicts. We have the Mobile Home Estates. It sounds like now there might be Capitola condos or condom concession, what are they called? The Capitola Beach condos, sorry. Pardon me? Peach Villas, thank you. It seems like there might be some encroachment issues there. And what's the difference between those two things? So I think there's just more questions, again, that we need to ask. That obviously is not directly, I think, from the city standpoint. But I was trying to be in the middle, helping our citizens and trying to get to those questions and help move this forward in getting communication out to everybody. And so I'd be looking to city manager, see what your thoughts are about having those questions to them when they come back in July or August, or whenever that's scheduled.
So the RTC is a public agency. In fact, I think they're meeting at this moment. And at the end of the day, they're being advised by their attorneys and they have a board of directors, and you're now on that board of directors, that'll be making decisions to guide the RTC. So I think my recommendation would be, if council members identify specific questions, is we could craft a letter to the RTC requesting that they answer them, but really, I think, directing it into the forum of the RTC board. Because I understand we are all passionate and we want to protect our citizens. But at the end of the day, that board is going to be making the decisions and trying to request that they address these issues at one of their board meetings. Maybe the best approach. Because I don't want to spin everybody's time out here in a process where we don't have any control of the outcome. So I think if you have specific questions, identifying them, potentially, we could have the mayor draft a letter. We could send it to the RTC and request that they address these questions at one of their hearings.
Perfect. Yeah, I think, I was just trying to follow up on the request. I thought they were scheduled to come out in July or August. But if they're not, yeah, I totally agree. That'd be the best way to handle it. And then I think that letter gets sent out and the response will be publicly posted, you know, and we can have some better communication. Make sure, we try to filter these questions down to Pacific and then make sure we have direct answers back. And now being on the board, I'll make sure I am a voice for Capitola.
I believe the RTC has been to answer, I think, one of the speaker's questions. I believe the RTC has been trying to get onto the property for a more accurate survey. And I'm happy to see that the city is willing to step in and be there during one of those surveys to make our residents feel more comfortable. I think that data collection is essential in identifying a path forward for all parties involved. I want to see productive collaboration with our regional partners on this very important infrastructure project that can really benefit our greater community. What I don't want to see is us meddling in ongoing negotiations that will not support the goals of the project. So I know we are, we're bringing the parties together so they can figure it out. We should not overstep and meddle in their negotiations. With that said, I just want us to keep the door open and assist and facilitate the conversation so we can all come together to, so we can all come to some agreement and move forward with the project. And I agree that, you know, now that Councilmember Jensen is on the RTC Commission, that many of these questions could be asked and answered. It doesn't always have to come back in this forum. Thanks.
Capitola has had a long history of being supportive of our mobile home residents. I think they've always been considered full-time, 100% residents of Capitola. And I don't think that's going to change with this council or in the near future. And so for me, I do think this, at this stage, is a disagreement or concern that's going on between Castle and the RTC. So I appreciate staff trying to facilitate some sort of an agreement there. I think as a city, I agree with Councilmember Jensen in that having been involved when this right-of-way was initially talked about and being purchased, there are numerous encroachments all throughout the right-of-way. And I think it would be beneficial for us in Capitola to know how these encroachments are going to be dealt with citywide so that we understand what options they are. Are they being consistent? Is everyone being treated fairly? We need information about what is going to happen in our community. So if I was going to support writing a letter to the RTC, my question would be, what encroachments are needed in Capitola for the right-of-way? Not get into a debate about whether the right-of-way is going to be used for a train or a trail, but simply to clear up those encroachments. Because whatever ultimately happens, those are going to have to be resolved. And if we can find out that, then I think it's our obligation to make certain that the people in Castle Mobile Home Park are being treated as fairly and equally as other people who have encroachments in the right-of-way in our town. I mean, I do think there's a fairness issue here. And we need more information so we can support our residents and make certain that they're being treated fairly. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Yes, I agree that there is some clarity needed. I did have a question. I know when we worked with Cabrillo Mobile Homes, their HOA sort of had like a spokesperson. I'm assuming they have an HOA... No. Or they've, okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong. Cabrillo Mobile Homes initiated an HOA group and had sort of a point person.
Correct.
Okay, yes. So I'm wondering if the community members of Castle are interested in formulating some type of HOA so that there are certain point people that, of that community, that we can maybe have more communication with than has been happening so far. To Councilmember Orbach's point, I think this secondary survey or next survey is going to be really important. And I really want Capitola to have a seat at the table during that. I think that will help us maybe clarify more what our exact questions would be. Whose fences, whose homes, you know, exact sort of more tangible measurements, I guess, is maybe, I don't want to get too granular, but at least we'll have a better idea of what we're looking at. And I think, you know, I can't even imagine what the residents are going through right now and what's going through your head. And I can only imagine, if this was my area, that I would be feeling the same way. So I'm happy that you all have come out tonight to bring this to light. And hopefully, we can start a little bit more collaboration. I definitely think if there's going to be any type of retribution or anything like that, the RTC really needs to step up. And this is sort of their area. As council, as a city, I want to facilitate that. But I think it's really up to the RTC to put their money where their mouth is.
Last week, I spoke with the executive director for the RTC. And she wanted me to relay a few things that they are trying to meet with the property owners. And then, and then they're going to meet with the individual residents. And they're hoping for a good outcome. With that being said, though, we have to, as a city in the council, we need to take care of our residents. So I would love to see the council come up with questions we need to ask the RTC. And I, as the mayor, will write a letter to them. But I'm just trying to think of a way how we can have staff get the answers, or, excuse me, the questions from all the council members without creating a round act. And then I'll write the And then I'll write the letter. So I don't know if the KED can help me out with that. And all the council members can put the questions to you. We can come up with a letter and then we can send it to the RTC.
There's really no way to do that off of the dais, unfortunately. The way that we've done this in the past is, like, for instance, for ballot, this comes up often for ballot arguments, is you get to appoint an ad hoc committee to work with the city manager to draft something. So if you're going to sign it, you would be one member. You could appoint another member to work with you and the city manager to draft a letter. You could, we could bring it back on consent for the council to see. Sometimes we've had a draft, like of an oral argument, in the clerk's office. And the remaining council members who do not sign it can come by and review it. But they cannot chat amongst themselves about it. They cannot ask for changes. They don't have right of refusal on it. It's really just for their information. So there can be no back and forth about it. So if that would work for the council, that might be the most expedient way to do it.
Yes, I think we'll, we'll work on that. I will be part of that ad hoc. And probably our RTC new appointee should probably be the other one.
I just have a quick question. Like, I'm all in favor of this. I'm just wondering what our timeline might be for that. I don't, you know what I mean, like?
That's a very good question. And we are not at the table, right? I want everyone to understand that we are not, two of the parties negotiating this. I spoke with both Sarah Christensen and George Turk today. Both of them relate to me that they had spoken this morning and they both called the conversation productive, which I think is, is good. However, I don't know if either party, until they enter a tolling agreement, either party may take legal action that really at any point, I don't know when that would be. So my recommendation is, consists with the city attorneys. We could have the mayor, we can work with an ad hoc committee. We can prepare a draft letter to the RTC. But I do think my recommendation really is that that answer is provided by the RTC at their meeting so their board can hear these questions that the city of Capitola has. And it's not coming back into an echo chamber here where their full board, who ultimately will be making the decisions, isn't getting the response. Because I think that that's, the decision makers really need to hear that information.
That all makes sense. And I think in the meantime, that we will prepare a letter.
One other comment around that. But there are some conflicts. I mean, so we need to be aware of that that are going to be brought to Capitola, right? About, I think Rob was very clear with me, about some conflicts of some areas of exchanges or something like that, where the trail is going to have to deviate and stuff. And so I think there's two issues about questions that our citizens have in our community. And then there's other issues that are potentially like a Park Avenue conversation. And so I just want to make sure those two are going to run simultaneously or are those going to be split?
I will be honest, I do not know. I had thought that there was going to be a conversation about sort of other areas in the city where they may be at the, going around on 41st, 47th, what those, how those were going to be approached by the city. I think they may be looking at a different timeline and different process than I had been under the assumption previously. So I can't say at this point, it's not a project I'm managing, whether they are both going to be synced up or not.
I was trying to.
Might. I think my, I think my assumption was the ask from me to have them return in July for an update was really from Rob Tidmore regarding the segments that may be troublesome and to actively problem solve those areas. I think, for me, the conversation about encroachments is a very separate thing. So I, I mean, I know there are a lot of issues all along the corridor, but I want to actively work on some of these other issues. And I know Rob is on the project differently than Sarah's on the project differently. So I don't want to really meddle, make things muddy. In July, I hope to have Rob back so we can talk about the segments that may be, may deviate from the trail and how we are going to actively resolve that.
And I think that's, I guess, my comment. If we're going to talk about one thing, I want to talk about Capitola from one side and the Capitola the other side and address these issues. That's what I was hoping that we were going to do in, when we're talking about the Park Avenue, and we haven't. So I think we need to be laid out at one time and we hash through them and we take care of them. And if there's encroachments that affects our community, we should be talking about that. If there's potential condos that are in easement thing that can be brought up later, we should really just know what identified items are. And if there's 10 items in Capitola, we should talk about 10 items. And so I wouldn't want to break it up into multiple different meetings and having Rob come one meeting to talk about one crossing and the next, you know, two months later find out about another crossing and another easement. It'd be nice just to have a list of what those are. And that's what I was trying to get to. Thank you. I'm looking forward to that. And he coming back in July, that he can talk about all those things.
Agreed.
I just, I just have one question to KED to sort of clarify, you know, who's in the room and who's negotiating. Castle Mobile Home Park is owned by Millennium. And it's a co-op or?
Nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit. So really, a lot of the negotiations that will go on will be with the owner of the park, who is representing the people who live in that park.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just needed to clarify that in my mind and make certain I knew who was going to be negotiating with who. Because, you know, for me, I think the RTC is a major regional agency. And I think they have the ability and wherewithal to, you know, work out how these encroachments are going to take place and how they're going to compensate the people who, you know, need to be compensated and how it's going to work. So I look forward to hearing from the RTC. And hopefully, they can work well with Millennium to resolve this issue.
Great. And Madam Clerk, we need no action on this report?
There was no action proposed on the agenda. But if the council is choosing to form a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee, I'll defer to the attorney who would recommend making a motion just to clarify, for one, who will be on the subcommittee and the purpose.
Great. And I'll be looking for a motion for an ad hoc committee.
I'll make a motion that the city have an ad hoc committee made up of the mayor and Councilmember Jensen to put together a letter to the RTC asking for some additional information about the rail corridor through Capitola.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. We have one item left. Going back to our consent, item J, Park Avenue Traffic Calming Improvements.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We do have a brief presentation on the Park Avenue Traffic Calming Improvements. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. So briefly, Park Avenue is a principal arterial road. It goes from right here about City Hall out to the freeway in the city limits. In 2020, we conducted a traffic study, which we do from time to time in coordination with the police department. And during that traffic study, it was identified that there is a need for speed reduction measures as there is speeding detected on that stretch of roadway. So in 2022, we, the city drafted some initial traffic calming options. They were presented to council. And then the heavens opened up and we got distracted from this project. But we conducted a survey in late 2023 and a virtual meeting in 2024 to get feedback from the community. The key feedback from those outreach efforts was there was really preference for safer pedestrian bike access along Park Avenue and a support for buffered bike lanes and more speed radar signs. And also the concern over any of those improvements causing parking loss on the shoulder. During the 2526 budget discussions, most recently on May 29, council added $60,000 to the capital improvements budget for this project to execute the staff recommended configuration. Next slide, please. So including your packet was a full traffic calming plan. In summary, it includes narrowing the vehicle lanes to 10 and a half feet, buffer bike lines, bike lanes through paint, but no physical or vertical delineators, additional feedback signs and the green bike markings across all of the intersections. Next slide, please. Between those public meetings and now, a couple of projects have been completed. The pure water soak hall project was completed. That did some crossing improvements on the corner of Kennedy and Park Avenue. And then also, our upper village parking sidewalk project included some pedestrian and bike markings that were completed that are on bookend this project. There's also included new ADA ramps and some other, thank you, green markings. And then, again, the crosswalks and intersections updated current standards. So staff is recommending adding the striping improvements on Park Avenue per the plans in your agenda packet to the 2025 pavement maintenance project that is currently under contract with Graham Contractors. They have indicated that they are able to put this alongside our paving project that we have going on this summer, assuming that you all adopt the budget as recommended in a couple of weeks. The costs for these traffic calming measures are approximately $120,000. It's $98,000 worth of striping improvements by Graham Contractors. And then approximately $8,000 of traffic feedback sign and approximately a $4,000 contingency because it is a construction project. It is included in the proposed budget that you will vote on on June 26. Next slide, please. And so the staff recommendation is there. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'll start with Councilmember Westman.
Well, I'm really happy that this project is going to go forward. I think bicycle and pedestrian safety is going to become more and more important in our community. And while we may not get exactly the project we want on various streets, having something is certainly better than nothing. And I think the work that's going to be done here will definitely improve the safety for both pedestrians and cyclists along Park Avenue. And the narrowing of the roadway will help to calm the speed problem that's there. I'm also happy that we're going to be able to do this this summer and that the contractor is, who's doing the other pavement work in Capitola, is willing to take on this additional work. I appreciate the detail that came out as far as the costs are concerned on this project. I think that people do get a little suspicious when the costs for a project comes out in absolutely even numbers. And now I have a better understanding of how you got there. And I assume the contingency is not going to be $4 that was shown on the screen, but $4,000.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jessica. The main reason why I asked to pull items is I, as, I remember the project when I was in the audience. And so I thought it was great to have it pulled for the council just to go over it. One question, it wasn't clear. Are we going to be changing the speed to 25 continuously? Or will it stay 30 and then 25?
There is no change in the speed limit. There are speed feedback signs. So the ones where you drive by and it tells you how fast you're going.
And what would be the process if, like, as we, I hear a lot of speed concerns on that, to having that be consistent of 25 all the way through? But I don't know the process to that.
So typically, you do a speed survey and there are warrants to lower the speed limit. There's also ways to lower the speed limit within certain radiuses of schools. I don't know off the top of my head if Park Avenue qualifies for one of those speed reductions. I'd have to go back and look. But typically, you do a speed study and it meets certain warrants to reduce the speed limit.
Is that a costly item to do?
Do we reduce it?
So we've looked at this, I think, maybe four times since I've been city manager. And I do believe the most recent time we actually had just updated our speed survey. And it was the first time we were actually able to reduce the speed limit on a portion of Park. So.
I think it's 25 and then.
The school crossing is on.
I think that that's correct. I think that we finally hit whatever it was, 29 for the 85th percentile speed, which let us get down to 25. So, so, yeah, so we did update it relatively recently. It is done pursuant to a speed survey. We do update our speed survey every five years. And certainly, it's something that we've talked about in the past and taken a pretty hard look at. So if the opportunity does arise, staff is well aware of the council's interest in maybe getting the speed limit consistently, 25 on there if possible.
And then just looking at, from a citation standpoint, I appreciate that the police department, it seems like their citations are going, have gone up in the last couple of years and trending up, which means there's some attention paid to that because it is such a thoroughfare. I think when everybody's so relaxed as they go through the village traffic